Time is seven thirteen P M. I announced that a call was present, a call to order this city council, a special called session. Everyone please rise for invocation and pledge allegiance and pardon my voice.
Hello, thank you for the day. Thank you for wearing this up this morning. Continue to watch over us and keep us, protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Bless every family that's here, that's present. Continue to give us your wisdom and guidance. Just may we pray. Amen.
I am speaking to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we don't have any public comments, so we'll jump right into the regular agenda item. Consideration discussion partial action on ordinance amending manacode ordinances appendix A fee schedule to repeal existing sections eight five point zero zero two and A five point zero zero three relating to parks and special event rentals. Adopting new section A five point zero zero two relating to parks and amenities related rental fees. Adopting new sections A five point zero zero three relating to special event rental fees. Amending section A five point zero zero four relating to fem projects using city property fees. Adopting new section A five zero zero seven relating to facilities and property rental permit fees. Adopting new section A five zero zero eight, party zero zero eight relating to equipment rental and fees for staff services. Providing for effective date savings, severability, and open meeting clauses and providing for related matters. That's your answer.
Good evening, Mayor City Council. I'm Yalondra Velirama. I'm presenting the upcoming fees and new fees for our special events, parks and recre-, uh, parks, facilities, uh, equipment and, uh, facilities. Uh, some, a lot of these fees, we didn't have them. Uh, so it needed to be added to a new fee schedule since we don't, we didn't have any fees for any of these. And then others got added or changed to meet the needs of our parks. Um, if you see, we do have a, in your package, you should have the red liner, you have, you should have the full fee schedule. And you should have a table that clearly show you what got changed, what we didn't have, what do we have now, and the reasons, or the details of such fees.
So, the old, um, A five zero zero two, the whole section for pavilion was, um, seventy-five dollars for up to four hours. And now pavilions, um, are we saying that's twenty-five dollars for two hours? So, the new up to four is fifty bucks?
Correct.
Okay. Are any places in here where there's an increase?
Sorry?
Are there any places in here where there's an increase in fees?
Yes, uh, if you go to your tables, um, I think it's pages twenty-third, um, item one, it clearly has a area where it says fee differential between the some current to the proposed ones. Um, the park, uh, amenities fees, the biggest change is just we took out the deposit. You used to have to put like a whole, another a hundred and fifty or a hundred dollars of deposit. And that was one of the issues we were having. Um, the people didn't want to pay for it, or they didn't reflect it accordingly. And we did analysis, an amenities and parks rental fees analysis, where it shows that a lot of our neighborhood, uh, neighbor cities do not have, uh, park deposit. What they did is like they increased their park rental fees for about ten to fifteen percent. And they just let it one standard fee. That's what they did. And that is what is proposed here. If you can see, there is no more deposit fee for park amenities.
Can you repeat which page that was on, or where that was?
Um, I know probably it's page twenty-
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, and item one. Uh, it looks like this, uh. Twenty-three.
Do we have to, um, is there a reason why we, um, is there a, a need for us to increase fees right now?
Um, basically market to keep up competitive and being able to-
But is, I guess what I'm asking, is there, is there a need, like when we're collecting these fees, is it, is there another item or task that's dependent on us collecting these fees? Or is this just money that's coming in for?
Usually we use the fees as, uh, revenue for the city. That can be used for park, uh, amenities or future more maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. As of right now, our city fees are like basically the lowest everywhere by over fifty percent. Right now, if you go to any of the parks around, surround the city, a full day, uh, park rental is over eight hundred to nine hundred dollars. And the parks are even smaller than our Timberman Park.
And I think even with that, people aren't renting, they're not renting the parks. So, what we would be doing is communicating some excellent information for the, really, for a lot of people the first time. And what it's gonna look at like is, hey, whatever you've had in your mind about what we charge and don't charge, guess what? Those fees are now higher. That's how the public's gonna receive it because they haven't seen, um, they haven't seen the information before. One of your strengths is that you're putting all this together and putting in systems and ensuring that it's gonna go out. And because more people are now paying attention to the work that's being done, it's gonna go out unfortunately as, uh, why, why are they increasing the fees instead of, hey, thank y'all for putting all these systems in place and organizing it this way and doing it like that. There's a, there's a benefit in being the lowest in the area. It says to the people that you want, you want them to be able to have access. If we, if everything goes into market rate, then the folks that may want to do something, they don't have that opportunity, um, to get into that space. And my thought would be to communicate all the systems and keep the fees as they've been. And then over time, when usage increases, then may, maybe talk about a fee increase. Because right now, we don't have a lot of people renting. What numbers do you have to show that there's a lot of people renting?
We do have at least two to three rentals a month in our Timberman Park especially.
But that's not a lot.
Weekends.
That's still not a lot. That's thirty days. Twenty-eight to thirty-eight is been over a month.
We already collect, eh, basically, when you rent Timberman Park, it's actually about three hundred and fifty dollars. If you see the increase, it was only seventy-five dollars by taking the deposit out. So, the increase was less than twenty percent.
When, and all the events that the people are renting for, what are they renting it for?
We have different type. We have birthday parties, we have community gatherings, uh, we have private events as well.
Well, what's, do you know, I have a percentage of the breakdown, how many are birthday parties and community events?
No, right now we miss her.
I think for me personally, if it was, if the events were events where people were doing five Ks, generating revenue, um, the artesian markets and that kind of stuff, where it was events that where revenue was being generated, then I would say that's a different thing. But from my perspective, because I live down the street, the majority of the events that are there are, like you said, community events. It's a community soccer club, it's birthdays, it's a church, or some group that's doing something. And then we're just gonna raise the fees on the, on the, on the volunteers, on, on the community, the people that aren't trying to generate profit. So, I would say, so that's just my take on it.
Weren't we already getting pushed back from the community when we had the, uh, one of the markets there? Didn't they move because of something with the fees?
The artesian market.
Yeah, the artesian market, didn't they move their thing from there already because of a fee issue?
Not just a fee issue, they were not complying with state regulations, state and local regulations.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Part of your, what you've been doing is communicating to them a lot of the new information that they need to follow. And so, to say, okay, hey, y'all, this is how you use our stuff, and by the way, you gotta pay more to do it now. It's kind of like two flows at once because the people in their mind are rolling with old information. And that's kind of what they were doing when we sat down with them. They was rolling with whatever they had been told before. And when you tell someone, oh, actually, it's like this. And by the way, those fees that you were told even during that time period, I know not those fees anymore. In fact, we've added new fees and they're higher. It just, it gives a bad taste into the public's mouth. And so, I'd rather continue on building the systems and not messing with the prices. Or unless we're going down or making it palpable for the folks, and then using that to spur more people, more usage of the parks, and then coming back and looking at fee increases at that point in time. So, I just don't know that if we raise the fees now, that people are gonna jump to and say, okay, oh, well, that's, that's great. I'm gonna start renting the park now. I don't know that. I'm not saying that they will and they won't. I'm just saying, I don't think they will.
I think Mayor Council too also, to the point that when you have these events, especially if it's, it's gonna be during summer months, if we have to make sure we have, again, something in place to allow them to be able to reserve it. And again, I think the fees are, the old fees were what they were. This is something for us we don't want. If people have to come before us and say, can you waive twenty-five dollar deposit? We may get more of those coming in our way, having to address that. But administratively, if we have the, the where we thought to waive a deposit for a nonprofit or something like that, we just have to make sure it doesn't put us at a, at a disadvantage trying to say if you got competing events from, at the same window. And so, having, if you pay for it, they basically use your reservation. If they want it for free, then I think the council, we wanna make sure those that pay are willing to pay. Shouldn't be, um, you know, second for those that want to do it for, you know, for nothing. So, those things we have to look at when we look at establishing that protocol. Because if it wants to establish old fee or not, there may be some requests where I need, again, some sponsorships can help pay for the deposit, knowing if everything is done to accordance or staff, or in extra stuff that we didn't have identified for staff, barricades and all that. Some of that we have to administratively be able to give myself and public rest the opportunity to say, we won't charge for the barricades because it was never on the fee schedule. So, there's some things that may require us to have to administratively bring it back to you before, after the events. There's some of the things that we had to consider waiving since we don't, since it's not on the fee schedule. And that's just little things like that, that as these events grow, we gotta make sure we have something in place to have the staff check them off. Each, each, each line item can be checked off with that saying, there's no fee, or how do we handle that? Which we, I can handle, but I just want to make sure it doesn't get to where it's, um, a burden for them to say, oh, if it's gonna be like this artesian market, if it's gonna be for the next six months, we, we have to know that upfront because if not, we're gonna be faced with, you know, a new market or something new trying to occupy that space. And just making sure we have something to guide them down and, and not be, like you say, mayor of old information. And I think going forward, old fee structures gotta look at the use of the extra stuff that's not, that has not been identified before in the past. Because sometimes it will require staff to be visible or at least have some presence. We haven't had events where you had to have police, but some events may require us to have that presence. If that's our in-con contribution, then it should come before the council say, we need two officers for an event. And we can ask the request then at that time, since we don't have an actual structure to deal with extra security. If a security issue was something, we have to be prepared to, to deal with the event that's utilizing our space.
In addition, in this year, there is, the park amenities fees are not the only ones here. We also have other fees here that we did not have before. That just like Mr. Moore said, we are in need of those fees because we didn't have them before. But we were still trying to provide that service. Without a fee, we're not being able to provide those services to our community. Um, for example, block parties, closures of streets, facility rentals, barricades, staff, va- vehicles. Those are fees that we didn't have in place. And if we did, it didn't have all the information into it, and we needed to build that in for be, for us to be able to offer that to our community. And all them, there are detailed in your packages.
What is city vehicle use? Is that for a city employee?
Uh, the vehicle's use is when the cities need to transport any equipment that is requested by, uh, the client.
What's, um, the debris remover and maintenance?
The move remover and maintenance is what all, that you usually charge any rental or any facility, any place that do events for us to be able to remove all that extra, uh, garbage, debris, all that maintenance that go into play before and after a rental or after a reservation anytime. Right now, we do have one that was tied up with, uh, the maintenance deposit. Wish that fee, the deposit got taken away, if you see. It's being proposed to be taken away.
So, if someone rents, um, Timberman Park open space, they have to also pay a debris fee?
Correct.
Removal fee. So, it's fifty dollars plus seventy-five?
Correct. That is the new area that got purchased across the street from Timberman. That big area, we have got people asking to rent that area, but we do not have a fee attached to that property. Therefore, we're not allowed to rent it.
Wonder if there's nothing to clean up. It's still seventy-five dollars?
There will be always some type of debris or some type of, uh, big maintenance before and after events. It's usually parks, uh, uses.
So, again, just for my clarity, somebody rents the pavilion at Jenny Lane or Timberman. And they have birthday cake and Kool-Aid, and they put all this stuff in the trash. They put the trash on the back of their truck, and they go home. They gotta pay seventy-five dollars, even though it's clean.
Correct. Their, their single park when users come for a park, there's some type of just regular damage as we're on terror. It's very standard.
Uh, I, I guess I'm just, it's the name, because it doesn't say that. It says to me debris removal and maintenance. That's what it's called. And so, if I'm a person renting, I may be deterred from renting because it says debris removal, and I'm gonna pay seventy-five dollars, and you're not gonna remove anything. Is it, is this what it's called everywhere else? Debris removal?
Usually, they used to have a, either they would call it debris removal or just maintenance fees.
Might be better to call that something else besides debris removal.
Um, when our park crew are actually preparing the rent, to rent a pavilion or anything for our events, they make sure that the pavilion is clean from any regular, uh, paint dirty by birds or anything. So, they go there the day before, all the day of that. They make sure the grass are cut, they make sure there is no bird, uh, poop or nothing like that. It's completely clean. They make sure they change the, uh, they clean the bathrooms, they also make sure all the trash cans are empty. Those are also part of prepping for an event, for a rental, which is maintenance.
That's happening on a regular basis, though. That's already taking place regardless of an event. So, I'm just saying, from a community member's perspective, when you call something debris removal and there's nothing to remove, but you still gotta pay that fee, that's not a good thing for the city to be putting out there. You might want to call it something different. So, because I'm not gonna be fine with voting for it if it says debris removal, and we're not removing anything. We move, we take trash out on a regular basis, and that's part of normal duties. Because everyone is using the park at their own leisure on a regular basis. So, someone is always going there and cleaning the restrooms, someone is always going and, um, taking the trash. Um, so, so that, that stuff is happening. I'd rather you call it a, I'd rather, or, or put it as a deposit. And if it needs to be cleaned, then, then hold in the deposit, um, in, in that situation. Um, because if I'm not, if you don't need me to go, if I don't need to go do any work after an event, and, but just they're gonna charge me for the work, that's, that's not, that's not right. I don't know how y'all feel about that.
I know, that's a good idea. If there was gonna be a depo-, if there was something to be deposited since we were, you know, not happy with that whole thought, that would be it. You know, to, if I have to clean, if we have to clean up the park after your event, then yes, we're gonna, we're gonna charge you for it. But I'm like the mayor, that's part of their regular routine of what they do on a daily basis. And if I was having an event there and then I just took the big bags of the trash and put everything in the back of our S U V and drove it off, I wouldn't want to be paid to charge seventy-five dollars.
And I think most of it too, if you have weekend events, Saturday, Sunday, especially if you have a Saturday and Sunday event, I think a deposit of some sort would be the route to go. Because if you have a Saturday event and then a Sunday event, we want to make sure the people that go to use it don't say, well, I come to use it from this window twelve to six, and it was dirty. And it could have been cleaned up at ten o'clock, but if you got people that wants to come through and, you know, that unsupervised kids, and then something happens before that new event, it's not the previous renter's fault. But again, some deposit would be-
And I'm fine with, with something saying for weekends because our, our team is not working over the weekend, so that's a different situation. What I'm saying is, throughout the regular week, when people are going to the park, matter of fact, tonight, does people at the park, did they rent it? Anyone who rent, at the, rent the park tonight?
I don't know. I have to check the park schedule. I don't have it right now.
There's a whole event over there. I drove right past it on my way over here, and the, the, you know what I mean? And so, I would, I would say the deposit might, might have, using that as a deposit, what, I guess it was up there and it got removed. And then, or, or just looking at it from, hey, on the weekend, this is a real problem, is we may have back-to-back events, and somebody may trash it, and then the next group coming up may not be able to have the clean park. Then I would say, put it, you know, make that arrangement for weekends, um, so that there can be a fee and someone on call to have to come because of that. Um, I don't know, I'm just, I'm starting, I'm, I'm thinking about the most simplest person. And I think maybe y'all are, are building it for the most complex. And sometimes when you have that lens of the most complex, you unintentionally might burden the, the simplest. And so, that's why, that's, that's the lens that I have when I'm looking at it is, okay. If all I'm trying to do is leave some people to have a snack, a cake, punch, and go home, I don't, I don't see a problem with that, with the fifty dollars or whatever, uh, there. But if I have to pay to clean up, then my natural response is gonna be, well, I'll clean up. I'll make sure that I don't leave anything there. I will be fine with putting a deposit, but I'm gonna clean up all my stuff, and I'm gonna take pictures, and I'm gonna send it to you to show you that I did my part and I cleaned up, um, from that. Because I'm not gonna want to pay seventy-five dollars if I can clean up myself. Now, if it's a new event where they got carnival stuff and all these vendors and stuff like that, you can say, hey, by a certain, when it's a certain type of event, a certain size, we may require deposit, or we're gonna hold a deposit, or deposit's gonna be more than that because the cleanup might be bigger than that. Um, I'd rather see maybe go into more detail about the maintenance and deposit stuff than just, uh, how it is right now. Because it's a little bit more, um, bit, a little bit more complex than that. And I think it's fine to have something specifically for the weekends. That's just me. There's three other people though. Because they gotta, y'all gotta vote on that. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Those were the park amenities fees. Uh, if you check the next pages, we also have facility and property fees, which we do not have any fees for any of these facilities that there, and people are, have been requesting to use or rent those facilities. But we're not able to do anything unless we do actually have a fee attached to these facilities or properties. There are also in your, I think it's page twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken. And in page twenty-four is also equipment fees.
How does building two and building one equal a thousand dollars? how does building two and building one equal a thousand dollars
um that is the entire property that mean open space and both buildings in the location for the entire date
okay cause like separately there are three fifty and four hundred
yes but that's just two then you also have the open space
that's why the open well I'm just reading the description it says building two is three fifty for the whole day open field is four hundred for the whole day building two in the open field for the whole day is a thousand
um correct yes also you have to keep in mind that the building has more maintenance that anything has bathrooms he has kitchens and
so if 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 me and Mister Moore are friends then I'm just gonna tell Mister Moore to rent the building and I'm gonna rent the field and we'll save two hundred and fifty dollars
it will not be able we will not be able renting the fee fields at the same time to do the for the two different events this thing for two different customers
you can't have the open field and the building to go to to two different two different people
that would be very hard to manage for our staff we can if we put some parameters on it on some
I'm not saying that we two different people I'm saying I don't wanna pay a thousand dollars so I'm gonna have him rent it and then I'm gonna rent it and we're gonna do one event but we're just gonna rent it separately do we have a clause to prevent that or is that what you're saying is that two people can't uh rent for the day
however you guys wanna build that
I'm asking like you know you're saying that two people can't rent for the day like so if I if someone rents the um building one then nobody else can rent for that day during that time period
usually no
usually no okay
I haven't seen that anywhere else
but which one is building one
the building one is the one on the front when you come from two ninety then but that is there's a fence around that building and then you have building two which is the one that we utilize when we do our events as a staffing area correct
okay okay for the um popcorn machine and outdoor movie setup stuff is there like a long range maintenance replacement plan for that stuff
like a replacement plan
yeah if I rent the popcorn machine for fifty bucks and it gets broken not because nobody does it throw it just gets broken cause we run it out so much is there like gonna be an account where these fi- these fifty dollars are going into it somewhere to replace it and buy another one or is it just going into a general fund
the revenue will go to a general fund if the item come damaged the client is is responsible to pay back the cost of the uh item
but separate from that is there is there a uh replacement plan for it because you can't keep popcorn machine forever so how how many years are we are we buying one specific for this or we using the one that we already have
and we are purchasing a new one cause the one that we are that we have right now is actually broken
is that by us or a client
the door completely mm-hmm yes uh the wind uh in one of the events when we opened the door the wind was so strong and it smashed it and it is glass
y'all y'all got questions
yes um I guess on my from my perspective one just um I guess I kind of I agree with the mayor and some of the fees and the increase um I'm not in favor of that as much just because we don't have maybe hard facts and data that kinda show that our community is taking advantage of what was as much um to be inclined to wanna take advantage of a new set fee um and possibly even without a benefit coming from it only because um we're maybe we're just now getting into the momentum of having more festivals more events and maybe even a larger um using larger spaces but it could not knowing if that was just an anon- uh anomaly for um for this time then I would hate to also hit people with that additional cost cause I guess and that's more of people from the vendor side of wanting to have them participate in some of the events and things like that because um this past year with some of the events it's it was majority trying to think of everybody but it was majority um people from out of town and normally they kind of put in the fees of their travel fees their hotel fees of theirs um even their toll fees if they come from um some of the other areas and so that's included in their costs in order to be able to purchase their um their entertainment and so versus um local people that are here but for some reason if they weren't inspired inspired to be able to want to come to come now um with what it was before then I'm not sure if increasing the rent or increasing the fee the vendor fee this year would be advantageous for us I think I like the idea how everything has been presented to to table out exactly what we include um from the city side for um amenities and fees and um other things that people can rent but um I guess again one of the maybe there's not enough hard data that can confirm that the people majority of the people that would be using some of these things are people from out of town or a few from somewhere else where they would still include they would have prepared and planned for that ahead of time and so it would still be another hit on our our local community residents kind of like the the events that we have at the beginning of the school year where um it was very nice of us to have thought about using some of our city um resources in order to be able to make it a safe event um for them to have during their back-to-school time but maybe some of the fees at that cost if that if we didn't try to do uh maybe like a poll ahead of time to see that if we have these new fees would you still want the event and want to host the event at this new cost would they would if would they have been more inclined to still be able to do it because it's their annual event or would it be a deterrent and then it would be moved to somewhere else and so I guess the last thing I would wanna do is still deter our local community cause we do have a lot of small businesses here the commercial businesses unfortunately I really haven't I've seen them but I haven't seen them just show up and show out for us in in the community so um really wanting to have an opportunity for everyone who has a small business that would like to bring it to the community to have an opportunity I think not putting it at market value um this year would be beneficial but maybe another number if it has to be a number um if not just kind of having in tiers of what the city can provide and what once you get past this amount then or this much things that you require maybe how big how large your event would be that would be require some additional fees just because it's more more staff more time or something like that and oh I think that's it wait yes that's all
were you saying something earlier
I guess my basic thought is that this is a good groundwork to plan for us for moving forward I just don't see that we're ready at this time I don't think the community would be ready to take on this type of endeavor at this time with us to walk this walk with us on doing that to the park fees right now we could probably it's like I said it's a good groundwork and we're putting all these things into place to plan for the future and being able to do that but I just don't see the community being ready for that right now can just kind of maybe put it into phases and stages to gear them up for hey we're growing and our parks are gonna be really awesome for you to use have you considered it you know maybe a little more publicity about did you know the park was this and that an opportunity to do this and that I just don't think we're ready for this right now for the city
let me make sure I am understanding so the park fees you just wanted to stay the same no increase or nothing uh then what about the other fees that we don't don't have in place um but we do have people asking and requesting to rent those these locations that will bring profit to it for example we may even there is people wanting to bring conference or like exhibitions to our the East Development Community sorry East Development East Main or Development number one and this is a great opportunity for tourists it is they're like multiple days exhibitions for all ta- all many things but we are not able to provide those services to them or even offer them the location unless we have a some type of rental uh procedures and definitely some fees also people are also looking at that location for like athletics that they wanna start renting to see if we can rent the fields for like tournaments uh cause those are open fields so they're good for football uh soccer many event uh many sports are just open field they don't need anything extra besides just making lines we're we're not able to offer that location for anything unless we have a procedure we have an application and we have especially fees
I don't have a problem but as to your first question yes I think we should not increase anything I do think the areas that that have been added or get areas to add I wonder though are we fully prepared to to do that to start policing monitoring and providing services at East Main
sorry I can't hear you sir
are we are we ready are we fully prepared to start policing monitoring providing services to to community members for events at East Main
that would depend what application they do and depend how big those events are those are things that we can control in our side and we can work together with our uh law enforcement services to see if we can even approve those applications those applications do not get approved just by one department it actually will have to imply public works law enforcement myself and at the end uh our city manager and those are things that get considered
so I think about like Zilker Park right you can rent Zilker because they have plan they already know what they're going to do and and allow not allowing those things are available for you at the time of your decision to make a rental I don't want us to be in a situation to where someone has to turn in an application to make and and apply and then they get scrutinized by staff and we have to say no you can't do it cause we can't provide those services or we don't have the manpower we can't do this or that or we didn't think about this and so we can't do it I'd rather us have a plan for how we're going to do it and that's why I was asking a question about you know can one person have one building and another person have another building you know if I'm just at the lake fishing cause I know when we first went out there that's what a lot of people ask can we go out there and fish and so you know do I have to rent a building so I can go out there and fish or is it no fishing at the pond um ever I would say we might need to have that worked out in a little bit more detail and if she already got it in detail then that's a whole nother thing because that's once you put it out there people are gonna ask and then it's just gonna be we're gonna you'll spend manpower hours so trying to solve an individual problems that takes time away from the main task of what we're doing and it's like case by case and it should be kind of it should always be a standard when we put it out there real fans Miss Veronica do we have to do an ordinance with the fees in can we not just approve the ordinance and uh with the definitions and so forth and refer and refer to a city fee sheet that gets approved annually
so Veronica Rivetta Assistant City Attorney there is a an appendix A in your code of ordinances already and that's why it needs to be approved by ordinance so that we can make a change to the code um at this time there we can bring back the ordinance if you'd like with revisions that you provide today if you just want to give direction or if you'd like to make a motion or um if you'd like to postpone so that city staff can bring you some additional information um I have been taking some notes I have been looking at it um but anything or right now you could look at the ordinance and just tell us which items you you know in your motion which items you do want to adopt or not adopt and we would revise that ordinance so um for your signature mayor
I'm just well I guess I'm asking you said it's in appendix A there's something that requires us to have
schedule I'm sorry schedule A
in the charter
I'm sorry
in the charter
in no it's in the code of ordinances at the end
and it says we have to have a schedule of fees so we have to have an ordinance
so you already have a schedule of fees that covers more than what we have in this ordinance right now so again any time that you're making a change to any fee it has to come to the city council as an ordinance because it's uh it's a code modification
okay council what do y'all wanna do
I have a quick question are both buildings up to code for rent the buildings are they up to code for rent right now
correct they are they just one of them just needs to be clean
all right council you got choices you can present your choice through a motion do y'all need me to reiterate what the choices are we are just thinking approve as is approve the recommendation of the ordinance and the free schedule as is give direction on bringing back the ordinance with um changes um approving portions of the ordinance and bringing back changes right and directing for changes to be done proven this portions of the uh ordinance and directing for certain changes to be done which mean you would have to spell out the changes Approving this portions of the, uh, ordinance and directing for certain changes to be done, which mean you would have to spell out the changes.
Was there mention of postponement? Did I hear that?
Yeah, it was postponed, but I, I think that's the item of when have going back and then doing the changes and bring the, bring it back. That's, that's what I mean, that area. So you can make your, make your recommendation with a motion. And for clarity purposes, since it's four of us, it has to be.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
It doesn't, let me finish this one. Is, has any special rules on it?
Yes, um, if, uh, because there's only four, all four of you must, um, vote yea or nay. It can't, if there's a split, then it's automatic, um.
Uh, no.
Denial.
Denial, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Have those buildings been inspected?
If I'm not mistaken, when we got the insurance, no, they did not. I do know that the building that we use for the events, they got by our fire marshal when he goes there. Because he will not allow us to use that facility unless it's up to code.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
I'm sorry, ma'am, was one of the options to leave the schedule as is, leave everything as is?
Um, well, in your motion, you can, you can, in your motion, you can use the language that's provided in the, um, summary. And then specify in regards to the fees and the specific fee areas that you would like to see be the same or whatever.
I think that also the other question we need to, to consider is if you stay with the FY twenty-three, twenty-four current fees, going into the new fiscal year, what are the, the two, the property, the two hundred thirty-six acres? Cause if we don't have that, we'll be coming back to you in October, November for someone that wants to use it. If we don't have any thing in place to deal with those, that two hundred thirty-six acres, then we, it'd be like a case by case.
Yeah, well, I, I think there's, I don't think there's opposition on having, having a plan, having the fees for, uh, East Main. Or those additional areas that were added. I think it's more so of, uh, the question of the readiness. Are, are we really fully ready to, to rent it? So.
In our ornaments, we do have special events ornaments depending of how big an event it is. And it's very clear that it's, it's, uh, over a specific amount. They have to hire police, which the police do have their own fees to make sure they actually are compliant with. Also, it has to have alcohol, they have, need to have specific permits that they need to bring before we even approve it.
I understand that, I'm just asking, are we ready? And that's really about all, city manager, now the, uh, directors in chief, are we ready to do that? Because that's, someone comes in with a deep wallet, that doesn't mean nothing to them. So the question is, are we ready to, for whatever happens out there? To go out and respond in, in the worst case scenario, or if they have a ton of demand? You know, I wanna rent everything. I need all your barricades. I need all this, cause I'm gonna do, uh, a four night concert. I'm bringing in the stage and we're gonna be out there all night, all day. And I need all of your resources, uh, from it. Are we prepared for any, whatever type of, cause it is, it's a big piece of land, so. And it can draw something small or it can draw something extremely big. So that's, that's my question. Are we really truly ready for whatever could be rented? Because if they, if we throw out our rules and they were like, that's nothing, they start cutting checks. Can we deliver on, on our end? That's what I'm asking.
It's hard to answer that on the emergency services side because there's, you know, so much what if, you know, uh, and it would take a lot of that on a case by case basis, but I think a good direction that we may want to do is, is, um, on some of the you know, planning, it could go to the park committee or a committee and, and they can help make decisions to come back before y'all, but to say, are we ready for whatever could go out there? We like to say that we're prepared for whatever anybody could throw at us, but if somebody puts a hundred thousand people out there, uh, we would have to put every officer on this, you know, on staff to, out there to deal with it and I don't think that that would be feasible for us. But I think that at the time of the application, if, if we were told that there were a hundred thousand people coming, uh, we would have, hopefully have the opportunity to say, unfortunately, we can't support that. Uh, but, um, but I like to evaluate things closely, so to say that we're prepared, I can't say that tonight. Because I don't know what the options are to go out there.
Well, and, and definitely, in your particular case, prepared, that, it means exactly what you, you, what you just described is not necessarily. We, you know, I can do, we're ready for anything or whatever, cause you, you have unknowns, I'm, I'm. Do we have the system's capacity or other things in place, um, and the willingness to move forward as a city in saying, yes, we're all, all the different directors are ready to put in for whatever it could be. That's what I'm, what I mean. So are we prepared? Are we on board? Um, understanding that it could be small or it could be something that's taxing.
Yeah. If you put it that way, my answer would probably be no, uh, initially. Because I would want to review a little more at what the possibilities would be. Um, but I don't know how that correlates with this, if passing, you know, rental fees or whatnot will, will necessarily open that, that door up, but, um, it may also guide us into a direction where it puts us in a place to be more prepared. So, uh, I don't, if I were to have to answer that tonight, I would say no.
Because for, for us again, like, uh, my mindset is, we are approving it. If we approve it, it's now, it's now available to be used. And so, you know, John Doe comes tomorrow and says, hey, saw y'all approved the fees in October. I wanna rent the, the open field three days. I want the little building too, here's three grand. Then what?
In addition, uh, which is part of our ornaments right now, when you apply for a special event, you have to have an emergency plan. Just like if you go to the Travis County, uh, special events applications, they have to bring an emergency plan and it has to be reviewed by the law enforcement of that area as well. Um, those are things that are in our ornaments and that we do take in consideration before even approving any special events within our city limits.
And if they don't know how to make an emergency plan, they can't book?
Again, they can go outsource it. There is pla- plenty of places where they can actually pay to create a, uh, emergency plan and they can also hire outside security. That's all the things that can be outsourced, especially when you're talking event that it may bring a hundred thousand people. We're talking a big event there, there's no way any city will be able to provide security for the event like that. You have to outsource a lot of those, uh, services. But they just have to be in the parameters of.
I think when we get bigger, oh, I, I'm just, I'm struggling and trying to, trying to follow how that works because again, we're, we're twenty something thousand people. And so if someone comes and wants to do something that, that big and meaningful here, if we're, if we tell them, go pay money, figure out your plan, come back and our chief needs to approve it. If he doesn't approve it, then y'all go back and pay some money again. It sounds like code enforcement. You keep paying and doing what you gotta do is, until you get it right, is that, that how we're going forward? Is that how this city's treating people?
Usually when people outsource those things, the person that they hired to do that are completely acknowledge of the rules and regulations and the laws and they make sure that when they build the, uh, the plan, they're compliances with whatever juri- that jurisdiction has in place. It's not in my area whether to say that it's going, it's going to be approved or not.
Right. And I think most cases, let me try to inject here, before we go down that process, we try to have a pre-meeting, kinda like development service, you have a pre-meeting and be able to go through the checklist. If, if the checklist can't be information can't come back to the city, we wouldn't necessarily wanna take money and then meeting and take, I think we'd wanna make sure before we go down that path, just to make sure these are the five things you can do, you, you come back. And if we can get to those checklists checked off, then we can say, now you pay this fee to reserve your date and time. But if you don't have PD to check the emergency plan or ESD to check, we wouldn't necessarily take the money. We wouldn't necessarily wanna put a, 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 a potential organizer through that process if we can't, just like the artisan market, how that process got to that point. And then try to bring them up to speed with. It could be overwhelming, so instead of having an overwhelming moment, we can learn from that. So here's the checklist, we'll meet with one-on-one before you bring in seven to one ratio. It's a bit overwhelming for a nonprofit that doesn't have that and then to be faced with seven staff members. Just have it to where the process can be, here's the list if you can come back. Insurance, everything that's gonna be required, food handlers, that will at least let us know they are in a position to go forward at that space.
I guess the simple, let me say one more time, my lens is not the, the highest of the highest. So I'm not thinking about the professional, the professional. Um, so in the questions I'm asking, I'm asking for, uh, I'll give you a specific example. There was a man that passed away not too long ago, a couple of years back. His name was, um, Larry Hargrove. Um, he was an R and B singer, East Austin guy, um, did some blues and, and so forth. His, uh, one of his sons, um, came to an event in Maine and was like, hey, I would like to try to do an event to honor my dad. And I have a music festival and I'd love to try to figure out how to do that in Maine at some point in time. So he's not a promoter. Um, he does wanna have a concert and bring in artists and do music stuff. He's not gonna know how to go and, and do all those kinds of things. And so, how you described it to me says that someone that's trying to do something nice, though, uh, the stage, the music, people may be paying, maybe not pay, I don't know, but it's not trying to make millions of dollars, but wants to do a festival here that become major annual for honor his dad and the people that like their music. He won't be able to do it unless he has enough capital to go and hire security that can draw an emergency plan for him. Is that what we're saying?
Um, it depends how big it is and it depends their experience. We also have a fee. An event professional to consult and to telling them what to do, how to do it and guide them there. We also have a fee for that here. Wish that would be me giving them a full consultation on how to do it. And where to get those things, um.
So we're not, we're not going to help them with, we're telling them where to go, but we're not going to help them get it done?
That will be up to you guys. If city council decides that they wanna support a specific event and they wanna give other type of support.
Where, if we, we need to decide to not, I'm just trying to understand kinda like the philosophy and where we're going. Because it's gonna be us that have to answer the questions, uh, and, and, and be in support of, of whatever it's gonna be. So if people say, hey, I wanna do something in the city, we'll go to the city. And they, it's, oh, well, go talk to Michelle Andresia and give you the forms and they go and talk to you and you say, here are the forms and they're like, okay, well, I don't know what that means. Well, here's some people you need to call to help you. Is that the experience they're gonna get? And that's what I'm trying to understand is what is that experience gonna be like for the people in the community that are gonna wanna do stuff? Um, and, and if that's how it's gonna be, then that's how it's gonna be. We just, I just need, need kinda know, is that where we're going?
I don't think so. I understand your question very well. Um, we have a plan, we have checklist, we will guide them through the process and we will let them know what they need to do to get to that approval and we will guide them every step, just like we do any other rentals or any other partnership we do. For anybody that comes to our city, we definitely going to try to give them the best customer service possible. And if it's guiding them until they get to that goal, we will, like we do here. If, that answered your question?
Yeah, I mean, what, what you just said does. Um, I guess I was thrown off by the other part of it in regards to the consultant thing, like going to get on that emergency management stuff. So, um, I, I'll let it, leave it alone. Yeah, I have a motion.
Can I ask something else? Um, I'm just curious, um, by any chance, would you know the East Metro Park?
Yes, I know which one it is.
Do you, uh, know what their fees are?
Um, I don't know that in top of my head in the analysis that I did, it was there. But also some of those fees depend if like people are paying to come into the event. They have a fee, ice, ice extra fees for everything that you add. Um, they have concession fees. They have parking uses fees. They have like others, uh, uh, sport, athletic sport field. They divide that park into different calls based on what you're using it. So that it just depend on what you're using that, uh, location for. Um, also if you go to the Veterans Park in Elgin, it's also divided in sections based on the specific amenities they have. And each one has a fee per hour and depending what you're going to use to keep just adding it. So.
Okay, but for here in Maine, you're not, you don't, you're not familiar with the fees at that park in particular?
I have that in my computer right now. I don't have it in top of my head.
Okay.
Have you seen, have you seen the fees? Or you, are you just inquiring?
I don't recall. I, I think I've seen them before, but it, it's been a while. I know they have tons of amenities, but I don't recall what those fees were.
I was gonna say that we do have one vendor, the, the, the group that does our fireworks. They have the event tentatively scheduled in November, but we haven't got anything done. Just wanna kinda put this out here for you is that they wanna do like a certification for other firework individuals throughout the state. And, and the venue out there gave them a, a snapshot of what open space can do for them. So we just wanted to, that's one event we know that could take place, but without, um, us committing to anything, it's it would be a case by case base for something like that. It wouldn't be open to the public, but it'd be, um, a space in which a vendor can come in, do that type of certification for other uh, small companies that wanna get into the parat- uh, tech, technique, uh, experience and certifications that'd be needed to, to be able to do these shows throughout the state.
Is there annual conference? Uh, is there annual conference that they do for the National Firework Association? They come from all over United States and they prepare for December and January, uh, worldwide uh, competitions that they, that happens in China every year. Uh, that's what they are looking at their location. We also have one that wanted to bring a heavy equipment, uh, exposition, uh, out there as well. We had uh, that was about, about a couple of months ago, they were asking for, for a location to do a heavy equipment expo. Which also is going to bring a lot of tourists to the area. As you know, a lot of those expositions and, and big events or conventions, they bring people from all over.
So I just wanna make sure that's every table that'll come back, we wanna make sure something like that is less than sixty days away, maybe, um, maybe an opportunity for us to be able to have that.
Um, Mr. Brea- Brea, you saying also that it would, um, if it is table or? if it is table or if it's approved without fees? Then that means every request would have to come back to us each time? Um, what is the reasonable amount of time?
Uh, we can't, we can't approve it without fees, right? We have to, we have to get a schedule. Is that what you were saying earlier? You said no?
Let me clarify, the ordinance that's in front of you, um, it does require any fees that that are approved, you need to do it by ordinance. But what's in front of you, you can piecemeal it if you'd like, right now. Or you can provide directions so that we can bring it back to you uh with a cleaner version. Um, and if you wanted to have special events come to you, then that's also something that we would need to look at to see what's already in place uh with regard to special events, because I believe that that's already something that you're that you're doing, for instance, the backpack, I think, event that that was held, that was a special event that came to you and you decided on that on your own, so again, that is something that you can do on your own. Recommendation would be that at least a note be placed in your sched- uh Schedule A fee schedule that says for large special events, city council will decide on a case-by-case basis, or if that's already in there, um, it's, is it in the fee schedule already?
Uh, you guys outlined, I'm sorry, you uh on the ordinance, you're already outlining the special events such as fairs, festivals, exhibitions, street dance, carnival, circus, rodeo, equestrian events, uh automobile exhibition, temporary commercial, outdoor amusement, outdoor concerts, and sporting events. In addition, you have uh one-time outdoor activities that require temporary closure of streets or more residential streets. And then you have for parades, you have the assembly of the three or more persons or vehicles who gather uh is for common design and purpose of traveling, uh basically a parade. Uh, those are, it is, but this exactly how it spell out on our ornaments in the definitions area as well, I just took it from there, all of these.
And Yolanda is referring to that spreadsheet that you had asked for to give you an explanation.
It sounds like we do need more time, so.
Yeah, how do we do the motion to bring it back to us possibly on the October sixteenth regular meeting? A little bit more clarity and.
When is the parks meeting?
Marino and Wallace.
Have you had a chance to spend time with Marino and um Wallace on this?
Um, this, talking about special events, uh park-wise, no, uh, we have not have a meeting, our next meeting is next week.
But once, can you do this, can you, can you take the notes from what we talked about today? And maybe connect with them at the meeting, at the next parks meeting, and maybe come back with something?
So you want us to go through with the parks and everything, what about the special events, you want also the special events to be run by the park board?
No, 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 just just ordinance and this information.
So again, um, what you would do is go ahead and postpone this item till the sixteenth. And what we would be bringing you is another ordinance with some additional information after city staff meets with um, the park uh committee, and if you'd like, uh, city legal would also be part of that meeting so that we can know what uh what to include in the ordinance.
And then council members, if you can, I think the biggest thing that we need to make sure we send to Michelle Andre is, is if you wanted to see the first section fees increase or not. And then um send that that your your thoughts in regards to the other portion where there's not existing fees on paper. Um, and especially like the area of the movie, the barricade, all that kinda stuff that's that's been put on paper. Give them, send your feedback on those areas, so if you taking notes on the document or if you can print it and take notes, or just send what your thoughts are. Then they can have it all at the park committee, everybody's feedback, and then they can chop it up and then bring back something meaningful, that also allows the park committee to have input on it since they're both out today. How's that sound to y'all?
It sounds good, when is the park committee meeting? To know my deadline.
First, if I'm not mistaken, it's October first, I can.
October first.
So yes, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone in further um discussion on this until the parks committee meeting on October first. And then we'll bring this back on October sixteenth.
We have a motion on for by Councilwoman, where is there a second?
I second.
Second by uh Councilwoman Hill, any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion, being in all her favor, pose motion passes. Um, Ms. Yolanda, we ask a whole lot of questions because we know a little bit about our community, and what we don't wanna do is is we wanna be delicate with what we do, cause we don't wanna put style for you in a situation where people are upset about something, so that's kinda why you you hear a lot of our questions and 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 passion around it, is because we kinda know how they respond sometimes, you know, wanna put in one in harm's way of angry residents. So that's, that's why, it's not you, is what we, is what we know comes with the community, okay? All right. All right, moving on to the next item. Oh, and just one other note on that, um, I did pull up the uh Travis County, and they have a very, their parks has a very interesting schedule. So if y'all can also look at that one, um, on the first. It's um, how it looks, look extremely cheap. But it may not, it may equal out when you kinda like multiply out this four hours here in Maine versus four hours here at at the spot, it might be the same thing, but what they have posted looks very interesting, so if you don't mind checking that one out. All right, um. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance adopting annual budget for a city of Maine or for fiscal year beginning October first through twenty twenty-four, and then September thirty of twenty twenty-five. Starting by reminding council that it has to be approved tonight.
Yes.
Item two and three have to be approved tonight, so we moved it here, so to allow for people to ask some questions and send in some questions, and so, um I have my chance to talk to council members, did you all get questions or information, is that what this budget sheet is for?
Uh, did I receive any questions?
Did you get questions? Okay, council members? Do you all have questions regarding the budget? Is this what, was this right here a request?
I think it's, that was.
This was a request from, yeah, this was a yes, this was a request from one of the council members, so, um, go ahead and ask your all's questions.
I just wondered how on the uh leadership program, that new pilot program that we're doing, how they arrived at um the budget for thirty thousand dollars on that.
Oh, you have a page number? Oh, that one. Does that request from uh Ms. Yolanda, okay?
Yes, uh, that number just came in to be us, what other city has started with. Uh, when they create this program, that is the usual amount that they select when the program starts. And that will cover all the equipment that they need, any special events of the kids will be putting together for the communities under peers and the T M L youth summit, uh travel expenses and the registrations. That is what it will cover, and also marketing and recruitment supplies, et cetera.
Where's the breakdown on that? Um, the list you just mentioned. That would've been helpful to have that included in this. Cause I'm struggling with a pilot program that we don't even know how many people are gonna be signed up for it and what it's, where it's going, what's it gonna do, what all it entails with approving thirty thousand dollars for it, I'm gonna be honest.
If you look on page thirty-six, uh, I know it it has a number of twenty-two thousand two hundred, um that was part of trying to look at the budget and balance it, and and there were some areas that were again, there was a request, but we started looking at where you need to make some cuts. I, you know, went back in with Berlin and started making some reductions, so that way we didn't have to, again, it's it's um, it's a pilot, and again, if we know we're not gonna have the participation for the entire school year, we wouldn't necessarily try to spend the entire thirty. If we can, if we can go out and get some sponsors to be able to sponsor the event. Uh, again, it's just, this the kickoff for the youth academy, I mean, youth advisory. And so it was just the number in which if we didn't have to get any sponsorships, this is what we're projecting as a cost, but as if we go down the path where we could get somebody to help underwrite it, we can definitely bring that back and say, it's not gonna cost us twenty-two thousand, it may just cost us eleven thousand, and I think that was part of just making sure the budget. It's a number, but we can also come back to you before we roll it out and start having a lot of expenditures, because what Berlin wants to do throughout the year is to be able to give us the financial report, starting October or November. In December going forward, we'll be able to see a better visual on some of these line items and in particular areas, program areas that we getting your support on, and if we can get some private support, we can also come back and interject that, instead of saying we're gonna spend the entire twenty-two thousand on the program, which may take seven months. But we have to be able to say this is just one area that, you know, we would like to be able to sponsor, and it's no different in the school, when they come to us with the library program, they know, they give us, here's the number we need to do the re- reading on the go, and then we set aside so much. And then once we get the final bill, we'll be able to account for what is actually was uh expended by the school to have that event. And that's money coming from the community fund, that kinda gives you an idea with this particular program is we wanna make sure we come back and not, if we can get the sponsors, and that would be our goal is to get the the sponsors to help underwrite some of this, that that's gonna be the key for us, cause if not, we can put in, the number was higher than that, if you look at line item. City events, it was over four hundred thousand, and I thought we we can't go that far this fast, other than let's come back to the council and say here's all the events that you'd like to do, and based on current expenditures prior in this year, we estimated a number that was a little high, so let's come back, and so we might have to come back to you and say, if Palooza uh Fourth of July or the main events, and we get some underwriting and some other smaller events, we we may have to scale back. And I think that's honestly what, we wanna wanna have a budget of five hundred and forty-two thousand and spend every every penny. We wanna make sure we can leverage our partnerships, and I looked, I had Fernando and Berlin look at what we spent last this year to date, we spent over twenty-seven million for different expenses from general fund, utility fund. And the year prior to that, we spent twenty-three million to different vendors, and I think we talked about if we if we pan out those type of dollars for different services, we can look at having a program or initiative in which we can say, we're you're gonna partner with us, but we also got these community events, we need your participation, and and that gives us an opportunity to look at programs with your your guidance, and say of the of the top, like the mayor indicated, you got fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, companies that we pay out for different services, we can look at how do you have them participate more so in what we do and what we plan for, and I think that'd give us more of a um a good guide to say, okay, let's look at this based on prior year expenses, expenses that we paid out. And then be able to come back with that part of the plan of all these different events that's planned in 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 twenty twenty-five. And then come back and say, okay, we can have somebody underwrite the line share of this program, and not necessarily tap the whole line item this budget for marketing, just cause there's some things that we can do when we come back to you. It's just, I know that was some of the question, when you see an increase from a hundred thousand to three hundred and thirteen thousand, it's like, okay, what events are we trying to do, and and then it's, it seemed to be a lot for one, but it's more than just one event, it's multiple events throughout each month, each month we can have a special event that the city puts on, but we wanna be, do due diligence and be fair, how do we plan that with your support? With the, okay, you 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 use this money, use this money, what about the other programs? And so that's why we wanted to make sure we're looking at that, and I don't think we've ever looked at in the past, how much we paid out to to vendors and how much they're giving back, you know, again, it's just, um, let's be a partner, but let's let's be right with some of the things that you wanna do for the citizens, because then those services would be able to touch a lot more people than just a contractor putting up a water tower, a contractor digging a new water sewer line, we look at different community events that that would be a benefit to the citizens if we hosted or underwriting ourselves.
Are any of the um other departments affected by any budget cuts?
I mean, there was a lot of requests that was submitted, but we wanted to make sure we just look at some of the central services that we needed. And not add a lot of personnel, cause that requires more insurance, you know, additional. You know, there was a lot of things that was added, so we took that into account with, you know, again, kinda like what we looked at with the fee schedule. What can we stay within, still allows to be able to provide good service without being like, now we have to pay somebody else to do that. Or how do we assign responsibility, so most departments' requests were put in, not everybody got what they asked for. But these are some of the things that would allow us to go into the new year, and not feel that we're taking a step back as far as keeping up with the existing services and then the additional demands for that department.
And remember this, uh, the budget is just a guide, we can uh always make any amendments, see if it's necessary. I will be presenting the financials every month, so you will be see the activity and going from there, if you need to make any amendment for any other expense that you might need, we can do it, so the budget is just a guide, we, if it says thirty thousand, doesn't mean that we're gonna spend the thirty thousands. But on her, on Yolanda's department, since it's this city events, we have to budget as we're not gonna get any sponsors, we don't know if, how much we're gonna get, so it's better to budget the full amount. And we, you know, we reach out to the sponsors or to companies and see if they can sponsor us. That would be a plus, but uh is the best practice is to budget as if we're not getting any sponsorships, because city events is a cost to the city. You know, we're not gonna get any revenue, any, anything, you know, we might get just. You know, we might get just the sponsors, uh, the fees from the vendors, the food trucks or any crafts, uh. But, uh, we're not, it's a cost to the city. So, but we have to budget in full instead of, uh, you know, budget, budgeting less and then we're gonna see a big loss. Also, I know that Yalonda, she, uh, when she does an event, she presents like a report. That way you know, you know, the full amount that was spent. And that helps us, uh, plan for future years.
And, um, I guess in the planning phase, because you were saying that, which is good news. Um, you don't always have to spend what you budgeted for, so it can come in a lot, um, less. And so if, if the, I guess since it's not presented now, the list that was said before of like what this would include, um, is there room to? I don't wanna say cut, but is there room to decrease the type of event or the magnitude of the event in order to, um?
What, for you, you got this, uh, page? This is the original amount that she requested, uh, five forty-seven, according to the events. Uh, we have to, uh, get it down a little bit, so it went down to three hundred and some dollars. And, uh, but, I mean, it's up to the city council to decide which events they wanna, they wanna have for the city. Like I say, not because we budget three hundred thousand means that we have to spend it or have all the events.
Can you show me the page you're looking at again? Maybe I'm missing this one?
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
That was the actual request, five hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yes. Oh, after it, of all the different types of things?
Yeah, with all the events that have been requested, uh, by the city council, so that was the amount. So if you look on, if you have the budget handy on page thirty-six, we put it down to three hundred and thirteen. So we actually went down two hundred thousand.
Okay. And, and I guess we're maybe saying the same thing. So like, whatever it took to cut it down to thir- three hundred thousand from this original number, was that scaling back each event's the magnitude of how the event is gonna be?
Yeah, well, that's how much we have. So from the list of events, uh, you will have to decide which ones to, to do, because we're not gonna have enough money to do all the events that have been requested, you know, in the previous months.
Okay. I, I think I'm just saying like, if we did the Easter egg hunt again, instead of, because the cost of the Easter egg drop costs more than just walking around passing out the eggs, then we scaled it back, so we saved money. Like, do we have that type? Is that what we used as a way of scaling back? Or do we just say we're not gonna do the Easter egg? Do we have to like make that type of decision? Just cancel it out completely. And if either one, does that come to us so that we can decide how far we wanna scale it back? One act at one of our festivals versus five X that we would like to see, but?
I would, I would say to try to under, you know, look at, we, we look at the outcome, that's just one year. And if, and if you look at Fourth of July, when we moved out there, that was just one event. If you, if you were actually out there to experience that leaving, it was, it was, um, you had to wait a little bit. And so that part is if you can't really, if we look at the total overall expense for the Fourth of July, that was, um, that was the event. If you got negative feedback, we take that to try to, how do we improve? Easter egg drop, same thing. It's like, how do you, what events do you want us to really build upon? So that way we become that, like the Fourth of July, you have the fireworks at Palooza, then you have the Fourth of July. It's, it's one of the best in the area. And so again, trying to make sure we can get some more underwriters. And that's why I was looking at it. I, I didn't wanna bring you something for five hundred and forty-seven thousand. When you've been spending, when we had partnership with Friends Have Made Apart, when we had those partnerships, they'd done some things that technically they asked for reimbursement, which they got in the past, but now we have to move forward that we won't have that partnership. And so we won't have, then we have to build that relationship trying to those same sponsors for the hundred and fifty, then prior to that. Can we bring them in the fold and say, these are the things that we'd like to work with you on? And if they say yes or no, and some, we've got some no's. And so we have to anticipate just a lot of things when you factor event and some businesses are struggling to, to maintain, you know, operating hours because of the help. And so it's hard for us to go towards some of those smaller ven- vendors. And so we have to focus more on the, the top tier. And that's where we gotta look at. And that's why I mentioned, I think we've got over, we've got over three hundred and eighty different vendors that pay different amounts. And so our goal is to figure out how can we tap into those three hundred and eighty-four businesses that, that we've paid out twenty-three million to say, can, you know, we need to look at some underwriting from you to help us. And that gives us time to really look down that path for those type of partnerships. So that way we don't have to come back and see a budget amendment for any event and to try to hold, hold the line. Because if not, five hundred and forty-seven thousand would have been a lot to, to absorb for just one budget. And that including police or public works, people that could use some a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. And so we was able to try to just be mindful of that and say that's, these are the events and this is some of the outcomes that we were able to achieve. So let's work within that rather than, you know, like Belen said, we gotta plan as if we're not gonna get anything, but let's be in a position to scale back. Or just say, this is the line we have to draw and not have a bigger events we would like, but just based on budget constraints, we have to be mindful of that.
If I may, um, when this budget was created, it was also taken in consideration our data from this event, that this year events. And also in consideration of the feedback that we got from council after every report. Some of the feedback is bringing top-notch artists to bring, to draw more tourists, especially for Minneapolis. A top-notch audit would cost over fifty thousand dollars for that kind of artist. In addition, we saw how our events grew. We need more support in different areas. We may need traffic support, we will need more lighting. Uh, there's other needs as we grow and our events become more outspoken there will cost money. And as you can see, Fourth of July was the prime example with it. We, we were planning for about twenty-five hundred, we have over fifty-five hundred. And that was plan of what we saw in the previous year, we saw that we not even doubled, we almost tripled, just in one event that only was six hours long. So those are things that we have to take in consideration when we budget. And when we actually made these plans, that is why we do those after action report and I come present to you guys and I take in consideration all you guys' feedback and the team's feedback. So please keep that in mind as well.
Any other questions or concerns?
Um, so last year, around, uh, yeah, about almost last year, we asked about the, um, the efforts for securing sponsors. And I think now we're here at the same point asking about securing sponsors is what is our capacity? Professional capacity to get sponsorships for, for these events. Like, do we have, what's on amongst the staff, that we have the capacity, professional capacity to get sponsorships? Uh, cause as we're asking and we don't have them. We got it when we had a nonprofit doing stuff. Nonprofit is not doing it anymore. Um, and all the companies that gave are, are not choosing not to give for whatever reason. Whether it be short or, you know, not wanting to give to the city directly, wherever it is, they're not giving the same amount that was given prior. So the question is, are we asking something for, of the city that we don't have the capacity to do? Because it's been a year and we're about to go into another year. And, and we're under the belief because we see our colleagues in other cities that go to, um, throughout the region. That city didn't get people to donate, sponsor different things, um, or they, they're headlining the group. And, and I don't have a problem with paying fifty thousand dollars for a headline artist, because they're gonna bring, they're gonna take care of the rest of the stuff, um, in the sense of they're gonna pack the show. The city's gonna do so well financially. City meaning all the restaurants and all the gas stations and stuff, they're gonna do well financially. Because you bring down a fifty thousand dollar artist. We're increasing our budget by three hundred and forty-eight percent. And I can see a decrease in the budget sheet that I have in the agenda. Um, my appendix A doesn't show that it's under three hundred and, I mean, uh, appendix A says the community budget is still five hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars. So I don't know if that was an accident. But what's posted on the website still says five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars or five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So I don't see a decrease in the appendix that's attached for us to approve tonight. But we're, we're talking about an, an increase of three hundred and forty-eight percent. And I agree with you, uh, Yolanda, in regards to if you're doing, if you're trying to do big and better, it's gonna cost more. We just wanna, I personally wanna know, do we have the capacity in, in city staff to be able to do fundraising? Talking to all these companies, uh, whether it be local or outside the area to secure event sponsorships. Because I think it would change my mind in, in regards to saying, let's go big and better. Because big and better for me is predicated on the fact that we're gonna have a huge stage and someone's gonna have their name across of it. This stage is sponsored by so-and-so. And so if we're not able to do that, because it's just not a direct skill set, and that's fine, it's not a problem. It's just, if we don't have that skill set, we just don't have that skill set, we can have a different conversation about what we need to do next. But all of my recommendations are predicated upon the fact that there's gonna be, um, huge sponsorships. We're gonna get someone to book the stage. Someone's gonna come in and, and, and work with us on alcohol. Someone's gonna do this for that. Um, all those little things can be, uh, underwritten. So, um, we haven't been able to, to turn a corner bit from that, um, at all. You know, we've just gone downhill in regards to the sponsorships. And so, um, you know, I'm gonna be better to spend some of the dollars to hire someone. And that's all they do is go out and find sponsorships part-time or something. Um, that would be worth the dollars versus, um.
Mister Mayor, if I may, uh, when I came in, uh, to create this event, we didn't have data to back it up when we tried to go sell these packages, sponsors in these packages. One of the questions like how number increased, how exposed they were going to be, we don't have a marketing department. We don't have a communication department. We didn't have any data supporting it. One of the things that I have been, me and our team here have been working very hard on is is collecting that data. Uh, having a marketing plan, which as you saw when we started it, uh, when I brought the first marketing plan, uh, back in February, that has detailed areas for sponsors. And at first they didn't buy it, but now that we have the data and they can see the views per, uh, announcement, per marketing effort, we will be in a better, uh, position to bring those.
I'm gonna have to disagree with you on that because we're still seen as a small city. And small city sponsorships come, um, through relationships. And, and selling the story is, is going to someone to send out what they've been saying, hey, let me tell you about Mainor, Texas. And, and you tell the story, you talk about the people that are here. You talk about the involvement and the activities that we're doing. And so we need you to, to cover this event. That's, that's how Mainor right now in our size is gonna get it. The data's not going to convince anyone. Because you're exactly right, we haven't been keeping data at all. And so our preliminary, our, our baseline is not gonna be high enough for people to want to give if we go in from, from the business trip, uh, the business, um, perspective. If we go in as what a business mindset, uh, approach to get the sponsorships, we're not gonna have the numbers to move someone to, because now we're talking about an investment. You know, I don't give this money because I'm expecting to have enough marketing from my name being on this thing to that it has some type of direct or indirect response. That's not where we're, we're at as a city. Where we're at as a city is, is the relationships. And I think that the people that were on that nonprofit were able to establish relationships with people. And they saw the story of Mainor. And the story of Mainor gave, had people to be compelled to give. Um, we have two foundations for the school district in this area. And all those people give on stories. That's not the data. Um, cause one, like actually for the last four or five years, the data's been held from by T E A through all this stuff going on over there. So they don't have data that they can actually share about students progressing or doing this or doing that. It's the stories that bring, they bring in the kids, they bring a bunch of people together, together in this room. The kids come in there, play some instruments, sing, tell their story, and people open up their wallets and give. Um, it's the stories. It's always gonna be the stories with people. Um, and so if, I think if we're approaching this from a data point, we're gonna hit, have a miss because the people, when they look in Mainor, they don't, they don't see Austin. Austin can do data. Killeen can do data because Killeen is large enough, has a lot of people. And it got a lot of, a lot of folks there with, with a lot of money. San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, uh, Fresco, all those other cities, Fluvivale even can, can do it, um, at their size. For us, they see us as little brother to Austin. They see us like Elgin. They see us like Lockhart. And so this is gonna be the stories. So do we have the ability to go and sit and share the stories to get the dollars? It's kind of what I'm, what I'm asking. And if we don't, we just don't. And, and then council, we have to have a conversation about what we're asking them to do. Because if we don't, and we don't have a solution for that, then we need to bring it back to overhear by the art park, you know, need to scale back kind of our goals and hopes and dreams in, in that space. Cause what we don't want you to do is to, to have to start spending away a whole lot of money to make this happen. Um, for the people, that was that our intentions. And it's, I'm def- definitely appreciative, because this is that you're committed to making what happened. Making on, or making happen what council is asking for. That's what that is. That's what I see. And, and you've done every bit of that. But I think our drawback is, oh, we didn't mean, we didn't mean to do it like this with the cost. And so, and that's not on you, that's on us. Um, because I don't think we were, we were clear enough in our communication amongst each other to what the city manager and what we were, and what we were thinking. Because the last year and a half also has been, uh, some eye-opening experiences with us and what things have been costing. Because we didn't know that things were costing the way they were costing in the amounts that people were giving in that space. And so, um, it's a learning experience for us, um, not only to see the numbers on the page about what we're doing or what we're asking for, but also just a learning experience to know that people aren't giving anymore. And kind of what happened in the past and stuff. So for us, council, it's, the ball is in our court in regards to what it is we want to still see happen. And so if we wanna continue to do the, to see the events at East Mainor, if we wanna can see, see those things grow, the usage of those spaces, then, and you know, it's going to cost. And we have to, we have to be okay with either paying for it or giving staff a direction in where they need to go. You know, if we. And where they need to go, you know, if we wanna stay at that level, if we don't wanna stay at that level no more, then we need to let staff know. So that they can pivot and and do what, do what we're asking to, so. Cuz right now what we have is a plan to do exactly what we asked for. And that's what the forty seven, five hundred and forty seven thousand dollars is, is what we asked for. We don't wanna pay it, we want what we want, but we don't pay for it and so we have to figure out, you know, you said if. Um and you're exactly right, um you have to have it for a budget item because you can't hope. You know, in finances for the event, you can't be like, okay, we're gonna hope that this money just shows up, so you have to budget it. And then if you get to sponsorships, then cool, you don't spend it, you use somebody, so I perfectly understand that part. Council, y'all understand what I'm saying?
I understand completely and and I also uh understand that. Our whole thing with these events was to, even though we may have. Somewhat lost one um nonprofit that we were benefiting from, but. Um at the same time, we should be out there establishing new partnerships and collaborations, talking to. Talking to stakeholders, not just within our city, but outside of our city as well. There's a lot of development going on and there are a lot of different entities around here as well that. Have always been um uh giving, you know, to uh for different events, you know. For example, like uh the car dealership Ford, you know, they've always um contributed to the school district. For athletics, um I remember a time where even when Mister Moore first um started, they even inquired on. What can we do to help the city? You know, so that's just an example that there, there's so many people, so many organizations out there. That they don't know what we need, they don't know what we're planning on doing, it's just a matter of getting out there, reaching out to them. Um marketing what we wanna do, you know, what we're trying to do. Um so the communication and collaboration is is gonna be key. Especially when we're trying to, you know, when we're dealing with our budget now and it's changed. And we have a lot more to think about now, now we just gotta get out and we gotta go get.
What does it take for us to go get a marketing and communications department? I'm willing to make that cut or is, are we willing to make the cut for that cuz I, I think the first question was still. Do we have the capacity or the bandwidth to be able to um bring. Mainor back to the level that it was, but then also give it the momentum that it needs to move forward and. How to say that, maybe that's not in their job description for them to have to do that to. The fullest capacity of where they, where they are right now and where we are. And so if it's, if it's time to pivot into a space where we have our own specific department and they just get to collaborate. At the scale that um their job title allows, then maybe. I just wanna, I feel like there's a middle ground somewhere in there.
I think there, I think there's options. Definitely worth checking.
Who else has marketing or advertising in their budget? So, I mean, we're at sixty nine right here, you know, top ahead, how much you ought, you ought have?
Mayor Council, um we have twenty in our advertising, we use it for recruiting, for a plethora of different things. Um and then marketing is kinda built into Gloria Rock will. Uh budget stuff into her budgets, budget line items for different marketing, for different programs she has and different. Programs that we do through the police department are budgeted through different line items, so. Um but on the actual advertising line, which we, we, you know, attempt to utilize all year, that. You can't be taken to go to a staff member because that's for actual advertising purposes that we, we've identified.
Yeah, no, I wanted to, I just wanted to know the total amount that we've contributed across the city into it. Um I'm not sure that, so that's that it should be taken. Um do you know what yours was?
Mine was fifteen thousand and I dropped it to ten this year. Um and my marketing is all my marketing materials, like my T-shirts and all my, my goodies, all the giveaways we do for just everybody at the city hall. Well, the city public works as well, I give some to P D. Um and then my advertising is strictly, it's three thousand and it's strictly for employment, so like. Maria do all my social media, I'm not that savvy with it, so she does all that. Um but we will post outside the city, you know, just on the regular free ones, but now we have Neo Gov as well, which is really helping, so. We use it, it's pretty much gone by the end of the year.
And I think as council look at this whole piece and I think even as we look at. That space in which we're gonna do more marketing, even additional branding. Right now, we, we have just Yolanda, she's just one, it's like when Scott Donald out. He was just one and and just that's the social media piece, so we, again, bandwidth, we can do some things. But to be fair to what they have to do, otherwise, it puts us at a, it's at a disadvantage and going into the budget. This year, we didn't think about trying to add more people cuz we got, we have space issues. And and trying to make sure if you add people, what are they gonna be able to bring to the, again, talking to the council? If we can get, you know, starting the budget process sooner, we have that conversation, what is it that you want us to do? So that way, staff members are not doing as assigned assignments and we have a particular division to do that, marketing and all that and then. That comes with the cost, in that way, we can actually propose a cost and figure out what's gotta give to make sure we. Not just have a, a new initiative, but what are the outcomes that the council wants to be able to measure? And and what it's gonna cost us to sustain it, cuz one time infusion is one thing, but to sustain it. Month after month or, you know, that position to go out and and to ask for money and ask for, to support us. It takes a special skill and I'm gonna be honest, you just, some people can go and and do that, but you have to pay, sometimes you pay for that, that skill set. And not saying that what we have now, we can do it, but it's gonna take us a little bit of time to get that skill to be able to say. You know, I can pick up the phone and and call and get about an amount of money, but that's not what you pay me to do. But if we got a team to say, this is the approach, this is the direction which the council wants to go, let's put together a strategy. And we talked about the tiers and having to be able to present that, that we have to be in a position to go out and, like you said, man, tell the story. Sit down and have that conversation just to say, here, we got this strategy and not talk to people. It's gonna get left behind like everything else until they know Mainor is doing good and and I wanna do more for the city. And so we have to be in that position like when Mayor Potem and I went to Ford, they did say, what can we do? But again, it requires some follow up and lay out all the programs we wanna do that y'all have blessed us to, to, to wanna do for the residents. And see if the people are willing to, to pay for that. And again, it's nurturing relationships and I think that's one thing, we've, we've been here, I've been here two and a half years and I say we've nurtured good relationships. But now it's like, are we able to take us to that next level to where it's not just, you know, now, now what, what's next? And so this whole budget like uh Belen saying, it's, it's just a tool. But it's a gift, it's a guide for us to be able to come back and say what other initiatives that the council really want to, to focus on. And rather than spend, if we can bring money back to the, to the city, which we got a couple of items that we'll show. Based on the position we're in, we will get money coming back to the city based on some of the priorities that you said. And so when those things come back, we'll just highlight that, is that based on other community events that you like, here's some money coming in that we didn't anticipate. And so that's the key for us is to build those relationships so you can have a little set aside to do the things that y'all wanna do. And that's the goal for us is to say, here's a set aside, what you wanna do, save it for a rainy day, we'll save it. And just continues if it's not there, like most people that have tight finances, they have a part of set aside, they operate as if it wasn't there. And so we have to be in a position, we have to manage the money that you allocate to us, so anything we get above and beyond that, we don't go and spend it. We'll just set it aside and and so that's the key for us is to make sure we don't create that false impression that we can do a whole lot. But at the end of the day, there's, there's some things that we, we, we don't wanna maybe go too fast. And it's okay for us to admit to our residents, we're not gonna do all that because it's gonna cost us and then when you, if we can be honest with them and show them the numbers. And the time that it takes from each department to put in the effort, they said, man, you put in a lot of effort for the event, it's a lot of time and effort. We have a lot of in kind in a lot of areas that, you know, we're not fully given that full disclosure that you have to have. Any event of all the staff members as y'all would see, it's a cost, but people don't see that. And so for us is to be, to be honest with how, how we're gonna be able to maintain that and not start, you know, again. We don't wanna wear our people out, we want them to be able to do their, their regular job, not wear them out on a twenty four hour event. Where they, they need time to recover and the next thing we know, we start having others incidents, situations that come up, so we have to look out for. That part of the operation too, so overall, I would say the budget that we have before used to allow us to get started. But then come back and have this regular dialogue and I'd rather have it sooner than later as the council, as that budget committee. So that way the entire council can know exactly where things are headed, rather than us having to get eight months into it and then all of a sudden you feel. Why didn't you come sooner if we knew that's what we were going and I wanna make sure to be fair to you guys that. This is, this is our way of just being able to have that type of transparency as we operate, as citizens come in, they can see exactly what it is we're doing. And then after action report will show that as well, but the key is not to start making decisions without saying. Oh, I didn't mean to do that, as the mayor and I learned from the city of Austin, you know, some of the things they said, the unintentional. There's some things that you can do that unintentionally causes some, we didn't do that. And so that's just, just being able to um have you guys help us with that part of the, as we move forward.
Um council, this is what I'm recommend, um is that we will make a decision on the, on the budget. Tonight and I have, um so if we can come back and do a budget workshop. To dive deeper and maybe see if there's a need for an amendment or not, um and maybe talk more. Have more conversations in regards to um what will we, maybe specifically. Centering ourselves about what where our expectations are or what our desires are, um. Cuz we're not, I don't know, I don't know. We're not gonna be, we gotta, we still have to approve a budget tonight. Is there a different of our opinion or or a different suggestion?
What, um, everything as it is, um, I guess budget wise, does, is it, um. Able to be reallocated to other areas, I guess, fluidly? Or are they just restricted within those, within the categories that it is after it's been approved?
Well, when we do a budget amendment, we can move it how we need to.
Yeah, we can do a budget amendment at three months or six months and we can move it to another line item as we need it. Thank you.
That gives you all time to, to ask all the questions and go as growing there as you need to and then propose something back.
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend that we come back after the first quarter, which maybe be in January. You know, give us a chance to get some things identified, so if we're gonna make some adjustments. We'll know exactly what it is at that first quarter, so when we get into a budget kickoff timeframe as a, as a budget committee. We'd know exactly, again, give you that opportunity to see some things and again, for us. In the past, I think the attitude is budgets prove, it's in the budget, but I try to work with staff and have that mindset, let's bring it back to the council. Just to make sure we didn't, don't miss anything, because if something gets approved, why don't have to go back to the council? That's, that's not the trust that I wanna maintain with you, I wanna make sure that if it's approved, yeah, we can do it, but again. Listening and being attentive to, okay, let's make sure we don't, we don't have a, or did it anyway, why didn't you come back? But again, if it's within the authority, that's one thing, but to be able to give you that transparency update. Or it's a, hey, we might have to pivot real quick, but let's not do it real quickly, let's see what the overall impact is gonna be sustained beyond. That one time, and sometimes you have one time events, kinda like the miscellaneous we talked about. You have one time, we just park it in miscellaneous, but what we do from the operations standpoint, like Belen wants to do. It's not seem like you gotta put everything in miscellaneous, it's just like, what are we gonna do to make sure it can be accounted for because. To try to go back and find all these numbers on the different pages, it could equal seventy thousand dollars. Whereas if it just said one item, that again, for the transparency sake, we're spending money, but. We wanna make sure that nobody's questioning how we spend it, because it should be to where what's the return on that investment. And I think that'll help the council as a whole to be able to say, hey, this is, like I tell, like I tell staff, this is the one thing. I, I, I wanna feel that y'all are treated like this, the board of directors of a multimillion dollar company. And that's the part where we have to make sure with Belen and and all the help, is to make you come and feel that and not just feel that it's. Ask a question, schedule a workshop, whatever it is, so we don't miss an opportunity not to hear some things that. We may not see cuz sometimes once a budget's set, we got numbers, we run with it, but also we have to make sure we come back to make sure it's reflective of. Some of the, some of the things.
I don't think that, that they're gonna wait till January, cuz what I believe is, if we didn't have to approve the budget tonight. We probably will either be here for a long time and still have a bunch of questions and so I think what I'm offering is, hey, let's. Let's approve the budget, have a workshop so we can continue the conversations and and come to some resolutions. And then do a budget amendment um in in regards to, to whatever, if necessary. At that point in time, I don't, otherwise we are, I don't know we're gonna. I don't know that we're gonna move the needle, so that's why I'm saying, can, council, can we agree to. To move forward and then we get with you instead of sometimes where we can go back and have some more conversations. And see if we can, one, get questions answered, um two, um if there's any. Y'all get questions answered and then maybe brainstorm solutions and. And if amendment is needed, then we go that, we head down whatever that path looks like, if not, then we at least. One, got the budget approved, two, got questions answered.
I agree with that scenario, also, there are some things that are coming down for the city that can help improve some things. But it's just gonna be a matter of time. Um I do agree that we need an advertisement person and a communications person. Because what I hear a lot of times in the community is, well, how do, how are we supposed to know about that? How do we find this information? I get texts that all the time, how do I find out about that? You said that this program is available, how do I find out about it? So we need some better um. Advertising about what we actually offer, because a lot of people in the community don't actually know that, so then they don't think. That we have anything that's really valuable to them sometimes and that's not actually true.
And and we would, uh Mister Moore and I, we were told that last night at the uh on the community collaborative call. Um same thing, so I think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to move, make a decision tonight. And then brainstorm and work collaboratively together so we can figure out how we're going to, um. You know, get questions answered and see if we can find innovative solutions. Um for, for the, um for the things that we're asking city staff to do. So, that being said, is there any motions?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Mayor Council, I like the following motion. I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point.
Oh, you gotta do that.
Sorry?
You're too far down.
I had to.
Go up one more. Right, kick. Right there.
Little budget for the ensuing fiscal year beginning up. And ending September. City of Maynor.
We have a motion before by Councilwoman Weir, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace, any questions to the motion? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, the budget will need a record, a vote to individually.
Okay. Any questions to the motion? And is this, uh, are we still, uh, five oh on this one? Since we have an additional, are we five oh or four one?
Um, as long as you're not raising the tax. It just requires a record, a record vote, sir.
Okay. All right, um, then we're not just roll call. All right, we're starting from my left and we're down the right. Councilwoman Hill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey, yes. Councilwoman Weir?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
Yes.
Um, vote passes, budget passes five zero. Moving along to the last agenda number. Consideration, discussion, possible action on, um, an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for the use of support. Uh, for the use and support of municipal government of the city, uh, for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty four and ending September thirty of twenty twenty five. Council, do you have any questions? And take questions or a motion. And it's in.
Some motion.
Five, five oh, okay. Yes, ma'am, that's it, that's it.
Okay. Council staff, I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point eight five three seven. On each hundred dollar valuation of property, which is effectively a seven point eight three percent increase in the tax rate.
Uh, yeah, adopt which ordinance number? Seven sixteen. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman, uh, Weir, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Hill. Hill, and any questions to the motion? Record vote as well. Any questions to the motion? Being now, Councilwoman Hill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey, yes. Councilwoman Weir?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, moving along, the city council will now convene an executive session pursuant to the provisions attached to five five one Texas government code. In accordance with authority contained in section five five one zero seven one five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero eight seven, Texas government code, section one point zero five. Test disciplinary rules of professional conduct, assault, illegal, council to end delivery to cover economic development of East Manor Development Number One. City council, we're now reconvened to a exec, um, open session. And take action on any items discussed, um, they're in open section. There are no items, uh, I'm sorry, pursuant to the provisions attached to five five one Texas government code. There are no items to discuss, this meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-two P M.